Good evening. On behalf of the League of Women Voters and the Twin West Chamber of Comrades, I would like to welcome you to the Candidates Forum this evening. The League of Women Voters is an organization that is nonpartisan and volunteer-based. It is organized at the local, state, and national level to encourage citizens to participate in government. While the League members do study and take stands on issues, we do not endorse or support political parties or candidates. The LWB does encourage its members as individuals, as we encourage each of you to get involved in your community and the political party of your choice. However, the views expressed in this forum are those of the individual candidates and not those of the League of Women Voters. By sponsoring tonight's forum, the League provides an opportunity for citizen participation and exposure to candidates, but does not provide an endorsement of any candidate or candidates. All viable candidates have been invited to participate this evening. Tonight's forum will be for Osseo School District 279 for three open seats that are for four-year terms. In tonight's forum, the candidates will start with six of the seven questions they received in advance, in which they have one minute to respond. Then our candidates will have up to 30 seconds to respond to each of the questions that are coming in via email. Finally, they will be given one minute for the final question, that is their final statements. Candidates, the League would like to request you refrain from making any personal attacks on your fellow candidates. Due to the pandemic, to help keep everyone safe, we have no in-person audience at this forum or any other forums we are conducting. We have been posting email addresses where questions may be sent. During this live broadcast, your questions may be sent to candidateforums@twinwest.com. We have screeners here tonight, making sure the questions are relevant to all candidates in the forum and not in any way a personal attack towards any one person. I'd like to take this moment to point out that we have timekeepers for this evening. They will show you when you have 15 seconds to finish your statements, then they will show you when your time has expired. Please finish your sentence at that time, as I will be directing the next speaker's turn. The order has been randomly selected, although for the very first question, we will start with number one and move that way. And I'd like to introduce our candidates. We have Luria Graham in seat number one. We have Anthony Starks in seat number two. Jackie Muscata-Jones in seat number three. Scott Feldman in seat number four. And Heather Douglas in seat number five. Question number one. Please tell us about your background and previous school district involvement that support your candidacy for this position.
Hello, I am Luria Graham. And my background includes me being a Golden Gopher graduating from the University of Minnesota. My degree is in English Literature and Theater. A big part of my English degree prepared me for situations that require critical thinking and being responsive, both with my communication. And I am here today because I also have three students currently enrolled in the district. That in itself is a huge part of my background and a huge part of why I'm running today. I have a senior in high school. I also have a first and a second grader. And I'm just hoping that I can bring myself and everything that I represent to the school board. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony Starks?
Hi, my name is Anthony Starks. I live in the community. I work as a barber by trade, so I'm in the community pretty solid. I volunteer at the schools. I've been volunteering in Brooklyn Park for almost 16 years now, not to mention I volunteer and work at the school systems. I have two kids in the school system at Brooklyn Middle, Brooklyn Middle School. And I'm able to really help out with the community, in the community, because of my job and what I'm able to do as far as volunteering, rowing, mentoring kids in the community for, like I said, years now. So I'm hoping that I can be a good candidate. Thank you.
Thank you. Jackie Muscata-Jones?
I'm Jackie Muscata-Jones, and I have two years' experience on the school board.
Is your mic on?
It is. Can you hear me? Not? It doesn't move. Okay, is that better? Okay, I'm sorry. I'm Jackie Muscata-Jones, and I have two years of experience on the board currently. I also have 30 years in education at every age level, from parents and young children through college age. I've worked with students and families from many different backgrounds and identities. In my 30 years, I've always sought out ways to improve education for not only my students, but for the entire system. I believe that I should be reelected because of my advocacy for students and families from many different backgrounds, but also because of the relationships I have built with local community organizations, families, and staff. Part of the job of a school board member is to be a liaison between the school and community, and I take this role very seriously. These relationships and experience guide me to make well-thought-out decisions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Scott Feldman?
Hi, I'm Scott Feldman. I'm the father of two kids who've gone successfully through the school district and are now in college. Both were involved in extracurricular activities and sports, so I've had the privilege of spending time with a lot of our excellent coaches and teachers outside the classroom. I've spent the past 30-plus years in the business world, and I bring experience in managing and understanding large budgets with my business and finance background, and I'm a proven manager of people and process. As a CPA and a former CFO, my ability to parse through the detail, find areas of savings, and make reasonable decisions to optimize the management of our $330 million budget. That's $330 million, $330 million reasons to vote for me right there. We need to be good stewards of the taxpayers' monies, and I'm skilled at helping organizations focus on the important areas while making sure that our spending is effective. While serving on other boards, I've learned my best role is to be strategic and long-term in thinking. I have the time to commit to this board, to do all the meetings, all the research, and get to them and to attend the various committee meetings. As your school board member, I'll be mindful to stay in my lane and will collaborate with other members on the board, in the administration, and in the schools to ensure our school district runs efficiently and effectively.
Thank you. Heather Douglas?
My name is Heather Douglas. I am a second-generation Osseo Senior High graduate, and I've resided in nearly every city this district serves. This community is my home. As a current board member, I participate in the work of this district every day. In a typical week, I attend two to four meetings for regular board work and committee work. I read updates, reports, and supplementary materials in addition to my regular communication with stakeholders. This work includes, but is not limited to, strategic planning, hiring Superintendent McIntyre, work on our legislative platform, and equity work, such as implementing the district's equity policy. As a parent of four, I'm engaged in activities across the district. And prior to our current pandemic guidelines, I volunteered in several sites. I have over 12 years of experience in early childhood family education in the private sector, experience managing my own business, and 12 years of involvement in special education. When reelected, I will continue to support the very important work of the teachers and administrators in our district.
Thank you. Our second question, we'll actually start with you, Heather. Do you feel the district is doing a good job of educating its students and preparing them for post-secondary education for entry into the workforce? Why or why not?
During my tenure on the board, preparing students for success has been a focal point. Each high school has a career resource center and school counselors abundant with information and guidance for students and families to help them choose a pathway that best suits their needs and their goals. We currently offer several opportunities for students to achieve certifications and college credits prior to graduation, allowing those with completed certifications to move directly from high school to the workforce. Students may enroll in PSEO and earn college credits towards a degree program while in high school, thus lessening the financial expense for students and their families while decreasing the years of college that they need to obtain their degree. Our teachers work diligently to ensure that every student has the tools they need to be successful, both during secondary school and when they graduate. Approximately 78% of our students graduate, I'm sorry, of our graduates attend a form of higher education after graduation. While we have made great strides in this work, the work is not done.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Luria Graham.
I would say I do think the district is doing a tremendous job in educating and preparing our scholars. With a senior currently at Osseo High School, it's just been a pleasure to see him go through the district, starting in junior high, and really excelling in everything that he does. I do believe that there are some opportunities that we can work on, especially with introducing more trade opportunities in our schools. I did have my own post-secondary education, but that's not necessarily always the path for our scholars. So I would look to have some additional resources available for them. Overall, I would say they're doing a pretty good job. There's always room for improvement.
Thank you. And next, we'll go to Scott Feldman.
Thank you. Yes, I believe our district is doing a good job of educating our students, and will find ways to do even better. We can do a better job with career counseling, resume building, and guidance for our students. As we know, college isn't for everyone, so let's provide meaningful pathways for our students to pursue two-year degrees or technical trades, trades such as for plumbers or electricians, radiology technicians, or medical caregivers. I also see value in collaborating with local businesses to show our students what a job is like and why having a job is necessary for their own well-being. We can teach our students to be self-sufficient young adults. Students need to see examples of this, especially as they progress into middle school and high school.
Thank you. And Anthony Starks?
I disagree. I think our schools are failing our students. I work with enough kids volunteering, coaching, and mentoring. And the things that I see our kids not being prepared for is half of the opportunities they don't know about. Our schools promote and just push college, college, and universities, and that's great. I promote that too. But we go back to traits. We've got away from trades, electrician, plumber, barbering, and welding. And I think we can prepare our kids, like I said, I deal with hundreds of kids, and just discussing them and helping them get on a path to electricians, auto mechanics, schools like that. They're not being taught that. They're not being pushed in the school systems. So I think we can do better. I think there's room for improvement. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jackie Muscata-Jones?
The district does well for many students, but not for all of our students. We have STEM programs and career tech ed programs, our international baccalaureate programs, the Genesis Program, which is a great program for students to get work experience during the high school, their high school years, PSEO. But I think that there's so much more that we can do. We need to expand our career tech programs, much like the trades that some of my colleagues have talked about here. I think we have college students writing the board currently that they wish that they had had more education on systemic racism and the way that people interact in different ways with more global learning. So I would like to see our district take more advantages of the Northwest Suburban Integration School District programs that allow kids to have different opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. For our next question, we'll start with you again, Jackie.
All right.
Do you believe District 279 is performing well in closing the achievement gap? And if not, what would you propose to enhance that effort?
We haven't seen an improvement in our achievement or opportunity gap for a very, very, very long time, if at all. We have big disparities in test scores and in behavioral referrals. The problem is complex, and solutions need to include systems outside of educational systems, like housing and income disparities. If we truly want to address this gap as an educational system, then we need to do several things. The first is to look at every single one of our policies, procedures, and practices. We need to bring in the members of our community who are Black, Brown, Indigenous, Southeast Asian, and other backgrounds to look at all of these policies and practices to make sure that we are not creating more systemic barriers. We need to attack those barriers, and we need to problem-solve with the entire community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next, we'll go to Scott Feldman.
The answer is no. As I began to look at running for a school board seat, I tried to find, I tried hard to find data on the achievement gap. The data I did find does not support that we're doing a good job at narrowing this gap. And I know, because the trends continue to widen, and this is frustrating for me, and I know it is for all those who've been trying to make a difference. Many students are falling through the cracks. The pandemic and the long-term shutdown we're living through right now surely is making this worse. So we must redouble our efforts to teach the basic skills that are needed to help the students to be successful in their schools. I don't have all the answers to this difficult situation, but I'm anxious to dig into the data to find out the key factors in this issue. You can't solve a problem until you know what's causing it, so the data will have to lead us to the answer. It always does. What else can we do? We should accept help from local nonprofits who want to coordinate with our district to provide additional and enriching resources for our students. Engaging more stakeholders will serve our students and teachers, and I know we can narrow the achievement gap if we work together.
Thank you. And Anthony Starks?
Yeah, I think there's a big room for improvement in our school systems. A lot of problems is, like piggybacking off what Jackie said, is for a lot of our minority students, there's a communication gap between teachers and students and vice versa. There are things we can do. A lot of it takes help from the community, too, parents as well, not just, we can't just leave it on just our, you know, the teachers' shoulders. But there's a lot of work to be done. I know, you know, numbers are thrown around, and that's all great, but at the end of the day, we have to start focusing more on just our kids and not worrying about numbers and budgets, because at the end of the day, they're the ones suffering. So we have to dig deep and work together and try to figure this out. Thank you.
Thank you. And Heather Douglas?
Thank you. No. We're not doing well in closing the achievement gap or what is better called the opportunity gap. This is a critical factor driving the work that we do right now in the school district. And we use this information to develop our legislative platform, which specifically addresses funding issues at the state level so that we can fully fund our programs, so we can better serve our students who are underserved, especially in programs that are not fully funded. While funding is outside of our control, other measures are not. We have taken measures already to try and close the achievement gap, such as hiring a, sorry, recruitment and retention manager to develop a staff that better reflects the students in our district. We have been working hard to look through every, sorry, I lost my time.
Thank you. Luria Graham?
Unfortunately, our district and many districts in the state, across the nation, aren't doing well with the achievement gap when it comes to the racial disparities. I think what I would be able to bring to the school board is a fresh perspective, because we have had lots of the same old type of people in charge of these type of major issues, and we haven't seen any change. I think a very important part is to make sure that the makeup of our school board and the makeup of the teachers that teach all of our communities and all of our students reflects the students that they're teaching. I think that's critical in engaging with students, being able to have that better communication that I heard a lot of my colleagues talk about. I do think that the Increased Teachers of Colors Act is a good way to head in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next question, we'll start with Scott Feldman. The COVID-19 pandemic has significantly altered the way the district delivers its educational services. What do you think the district has performed well during the pandemic? What can the district do better? And how would you help get the district prepared for other potential future emergencies?
Thank you. I think we all have our own opinions on how to manage things through the COVID-19 pandemic, but I don't want to criticize or Monday morning quarterback this thing because I wasn't there when the decisions were made. Of course, we want to consider everyone's health needs, but with 21,000 students and nearly 3,000 teachers and staff and administration, we're never going to be able to address every specific need. Here's what I believe. Kids do better when they're in school, with their teachers and their coaches and their friends. Kids being in school is critical to their learning, and as long as they're not in person, this is only going to widen that achievement gap. Quite simply, we should be intent on getting our students back into school while taking the appropriate health protocols. Thank you.
Thank you. Heather Douglas?
Thank you. Our entire district staff has handled the pandemic with incredible grace and agility. I'm continually impressed by their ability to adapt and pivot, oftentimes in rapid and unpredictable situations. Many of the changes our district has had to make are outside of our control. Despite limitations on allowable measures, our staff have worked overtime, finding ways to operate safely within the allowable guidelines. District leaders have come together to create scorecards and guide the decision-making process, making our process transparent and easily shared with stakeholders. If I could go back and do anything differently to prepare for this school year, I would push for the allocation of funding to develop and create content that would be readily available to teachers, to deliver to students, and for students to access, thus mitigating some of the pressure on our hybrid teachers to be both online educators and teach in person at the same time. I would have used the information we had available to create a plan well in advance of the governor's guidance, allowing staff and families ample time to prepare for the coming school year.
Thank you. Maria Graham?
You know, when you look at how we were able to get our students back into school, I'm appreciative of all of our educators. I'm appreciative of the leadership in our schools. I know that a big decision for our family was deciding if we were going to feel safe enough to send our kids back to school. And ultimately, a big part of that decision was we didn't want our students to be left behind. As parents are working, and we have two parents in our household that are working, it's difficult to maintain the schoolwork and to achieve the goals that the school has set for our kids in the at-home space. So I want to make sure the school board is able to keep the achievement gap at the minimum where it's at and don't let it widen during this time. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jackie Muscata-Jones?
So the district's been working really hard with the information that they've gotten and the system resources that we currently have. Some of the highlights are we've really pushed out food distribution to our students. We've worked to make sure everyone has access to devices and internet, and we're pioneering a digital academy, as well as a decision-making model that other districts are taking. Some things that have been barriers, and part of that is because of how much a system can bear at any given time, is timely transitions for families. I would like to see more capacity in the Communication Department for that, greater partnership with families to determine needs and to provide support, tech support in multiple languages, managing workload for staff and hiring additional staff, and then continue improvement on consistency of delivery of our education system. Thank you.
Thank you. And Anthony Starks?
Thank you. I think we could have done better. I think everybody's working well under the conditions that's given, teachers, students, and parents alike. I think if we, we would have spent the money that was put forth far as our computer systems and everything, when it was given to us as a community, we would have been ready, I think, to handle the pandemic a little bit better when it came in, instead of waiting until now. We had to spend the money anyway. We just spent it later, and it wasn't properly spent had we spent the money seven years ago when it was given to us. So hopefully, we'll spend it right this time, because there will be more pandemics. That's just the world we live in. And so our kids and families, and we can do better by our kids. So we'll see.
Thank you. And for our next question, we'll start with you again, Anthony Starks. Do you feel there are systemic racial disparities and/or implicit biases in the way the district delivers education to its students today? Why or why not? Please give examples.
I do, and it's been that way. It's not anything new. Most of our tests and everything that's given to most of our minority kids, brown kids, have always been not fair. I think that one thing that challenges our kids, especially our BIPOC kids, brown kids, is communication. A lot of times, our kids are, is given work and assignments, and it's explained to them, but not what they can understand. You know, language barrier, even though we all speak English, it's not all, it doesn't all translate the same. So what a kid hears is going to be something totally different than what an adult hears. So they go home, they struggle, their parents may struggle in this aspect because they wasn't great students. So we got to do better, and there's room to improve on that.
Thank you. Jackie Muscata-Jones?
There's definitely systemic racial disparities and implicit biases in the way that pretty much every district educates students today. It's not changed much enough from when it was originally developed. Many of the policies, procedures, and practices were developed by the dominant culture at the time, and they do a disservice to many of our current students. Results of this are clearly shown in data points like the disproportionate behavioral referrals for our Black students, experiences of our Black students, and academic disparities. As a board member, I have heard stories of Black students be told that they didn't belong in a higher-level class and many other stories that break my heart. It is imperative that we include Black, Indigenous, people of color, including American descendants of people who were enslaved in our decision-making and policy recreation. Thank you. As a teacher fighting for equity, I've seen the progress in the large scheme of things, and we need to change things now.
Thank you. Heather Douglas?
Thank you. When I think about these issues, I think about Northview Middle School. When I visited Northview last year, I was given a tour of the building by a diverse group of students, and we talked about this very issue. I was impressed with their thoughtful responses and their candor. Often, in our community, Northview gets a bad rap. But these students don't see the negative in their school. In school, they feel heard, they feel supported, and they feel that they have an inclusive and welcoming school environment. We must be careful not to allow our students, I'm sorry, we must be careful to allow our students to find their identities on their own without putting our own biases on them. We work hard to be inclusive of all students by adopting curriculum that is inclusive of diverse populations, and we display flags from each nation represented in our schools and at their graduation ceremonies. We recognize and celebrate unique cultural differences. I regularly see our schools using their unique and diverse populations to create opportunities to come together and develop cultural awareness to learn to become global citizens.
Thank you. Maria Graham?
Absolutely, there are some systemic racial disparities. I mean, it's evident in all the data. It's evident. When you look at what happened here with George Floyd and how it erupted the city, it just, it's shone a light on what needs to be done in order to get us all into a situation where everyone has an opportunity to go to school, feel heard, feel like they're part of the community, feel like they matter. And so I truly believe that there is a way that we can bridge the gap of these disparities. I truly believe. But I also feel like that does start with what our teachers look like, what our school board looks like, so that we can have people that identify culturally with our population. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Feldman?
Well, I don't know about that. Well, I don't know about the systemic part of the racial disparities, but I haven't seen any data that systemic racism exists in our district. Clearly, I would support a zero tolerance racism policy, and I don't believe that our teachers are inherently racist either. From the data that I have seen, I do know that schools in our district with more diversity seem to have lower student-to-teacher ratios and they have more support staff to address the students' needs at the school. So the district has made some changes to provide additional resources to school who are showing the greatest need. Again, while we as candidates don't have access to all of the needed information to inform and make decisions, my approach would be to collect and analyze the data, determine the cause and effect, and work towards developing a workable solution.
Thank you. Our next question, we'll start with Heather Douglas. Currently, school board members are elected at large where the candidates who receive the most votes are elected to the school board. Do you support a change to create voting wards within the district based on geographical boundaries where one person from each ward is elected to the school board? Why or why not?
I support voting at large. To be elected to the school board, candidates must be a top-three vote getter in each precinct to be elected to the board. This means that all board members have majority support from all community members. Right now, all school board members work together to make decisions that best serve the district as a whole. We must consider the equity in the decision-making process and work to allocate resources accordingly. We attend events at sites across our district. Our responsibility is to the community as a whole. We must look through an equity lens while we listen to the voices of all stakeholders. By implementing a ward system, we would see immediate division between wards. Board members could potentially put the desires of their ward above the district as a whole. Division is the last thing I want to see in this community. We are one district.
Thank you. Scott Bellman.
We need representation by parents who live in the community and who have a desire to serve and who have time to dedicate to the school district. If we move to a ward structure instead of an at-large structure, we'll increase the likelihood that board members will shift their allegiance from the school district's best needs to a neighborhood or other geographical areas' needs. Our current board currently has representatives from Osseo, Maple Grove, and Brooklyn Park. And the candidates, not just here tonight that you see, but the next five groups reside in Osseo, Maple Grove, Plymouth, and Brooklyn Park. So I understand that other school districts may do different do things differently. But honestly, I think our school district has more important topics to focus on, such as the achievement gap and COVID learning models, and to consider spending time and efforts on how we change how we vote for people to get on the school board. Thank you.
Thank you. Jackie Muscata Jones.
I've been wrestling with this thought for the past two years and I have determined that the ward system is absolutely imperative in our district for several reasons. I believe that we need at-large and ward system because we need representation across the district, but mostly because I feel like we're often inaccessible to individual families or schools because we have so many schools. So board members that I've talked to in districts that have wards say it's a beautiful thing to have the relationships with certain schools instead of having to spread yourself across the entire district. And that's another reason to have the ward system. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony Starks.
I absolutely agree we need wards. Because what we need is everybody needs to have a seat at the table. Brooklyn Park, if we had all six people from Brooklyn Park, how can they speak for Maple Grove or vice versa? So a ward system, it doesn't cause division. Only people who come in with their own agenda would cause a division. A ward system, it simply states that me, as a minority man who lives in the community, who kids go to school in my community, I get to speak for my kids in my community and bring to the table what we need, what all of our kids need in our community. And we bring all that together, Osseo, Maple Grove, and Brooklyn Park. If we had wards, we would have people and we would all be able to sit down and discuss what and it could be a little different in each ward. So I I think wards would be great. Absolutely.
Thank you. Maria Graham.
So we've talked extensively today about like, why is there this achievement gap? And we need more communication and we need the student students to see teachers and educators that look like them. And I think I would be open to looking at alternatives because when you think about it, the way it's been going, there has been very little, if any, movement with the achievement gap, with the racial disparities. So there's always an opportunity to look at alternatives. So I would be open to looking at 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 a different system since the current one isn't very effective.
Thank you. And our next question, we'll start with you again, Maria Graham. How do you feel teachers can be better supported during distance learning and hybrid learning? Thirty seconds.
What was that?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. So this will be thirty-second questions. We'll have two thirty-second questions.
Okay. I feel like we can support our teachers by, you know, having empathy. This is a very fluid and rapid situation, rapidly changing, excuse me, situation with COVID. And everyone should be flexible, whether it's the school board, parents. We should all just work together and make sure that we are supportive to the teachers. They're the ones on the ground, they're the ones taking care of our our children. They're the ones that are being in this position that none of us want to be in. So I I appreciate what they're doing and I want to see everyone support our educators. Thank you.
Thank you. And Heather Douglas.
We need to be willing to try new up new ideas and consider out-of-the-box opportunities. We need to allocate resources to ensure that our teachers have the tools that they need to successfully teach their students in a new way. And we need to think of new ways to support their mental health during this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Bellman.
So certainly flexibility and an understanding, empathy is a really good idea. I think we should be having ways to give specific feedback in person. It's really easy to type emails and and that stuff gets lost sometimes in the ether world. It'd be good to have direct parental feedback and ways to do that. We can we can do that in small groups, even if it's groups of 25 or so at a time. And then finally, the school district may already have done this, but they should have some sort of task force that are able to put the extra effort into this specific issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Jackie Muscata Jones.
As a teacher, this is near and dear to my heart. I think the best way that we can support our teachers right now is by listening to them and by using their ideas on how to help alleviate their workload. We can also use some of our our reserve funds to do, you know, short-term innovative ideas to help relieve some of their workload.
Thank you. And Anthony Starks.
Absolutely. We need to support our teachers. Right now, they are essential workers. I mean, they're on the front line, they're dealing with kids through the whole COVID-19. And they're doing well. They do need support. And when they need time off, you know, we need to figure out a way to get them to time off so they can just take back, sit back and take a deep breath and continue to teach our kids.
Thank you. Our next question, and we'll be starting with you again, Anthony Starks. What do you see as the most important challenge facing our district?
Oh, bridging that achievement gap, we we definitely have to do better. And getting diversity as for educators in our school. Like our colleague said, we need to be able to look, our kids need to be able to look around and see people who look like them, that they can relate to, who can relate to them. So when they have a problem, the problems can be dealt with, you know, not just pushed to the side because you don't understand the problems that they're having. I think that's a big, big key.
Thank you. Maria Graham.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, what was the question again?
What do you see as the most important challenge facing our district?
Oh, I wish I could just name one, but I'm going to have to agree, it's the the achievement gap. The the best part at focusing at the achievement gap is there is a broad approach that we can have when we look at it. It's multifaceted. I mean, it has to do with mental health, it has to do with diversity. It has to do with communicating better with our families. It has to do with many things. So I would have a broad approach to look at how we can get out of the place where we are continuously talking about the same issue and be able to move forward and progressive.
Thank you. Scott Bellman.
Our biggest short-term need right now addressing the district certainly is COVID and how we get the kids back to school. But from a long-term perspective, absolutely the achievement gap. I was, before I decided to do this, I was looking hard at the at those numbers and I was just amazed. I was really frustrated that the achievement gap continues to widen. And I don't see how, I don't see why that's happening. So if I get on the board, that's the area, long-term, that I'm going to be focused on specifically.
Thank you. And Heather Douglas.
Thank you. Without a doubt, the biggest issue facing our school district is the achievement gap. It has been for many years and it will continue to be until we resolve this issue. And I believe that one area that we can focus on to improve that rapidly is to focus on the social-emotional health of our students and well-being, which has been statistically proven to provide the best return on investment as far as their academic success. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jackie Muscata Jones.
I would say the biggest issue facing our district and most of education right now is actually systemic racism. And I think that if we want to talk about the achievement gap, if we want to talk about our social-emotional learning for everyone, we have to look at the entire system and where the unintentional barriers are and remove those barriers and build up a system where everyone can succeed and everyone belongs together.
Thank you. And now we will move to our last question of the night. And we'll start with you and this will be a one-minute response. And we'll start back with you again, Jackie Muscata Jones.
Beautiful, thank you.
In summary, how do you intend to best serve the school district and move it forward?
My leadership style is to lift others and support people into being the best at what they do. My gift is being able to build relationships and see things from multiple perspectives. My experience is is 30 years in education, sorry, from parents all the way through college. And my passion is to push the current boundaries that are barriers so that every single student can learn and every single student feels valued and supported. It's time to be innovated innovative with tackling disparities disparities and barriers that our black, brown, indigenous, and Southeast Asian students run into. Let's be innovative for how we support our LGBTQ plus students, staff. Let's be innovative in breaking down barriers for our multiple-language students so they can learn in multiple languages and have materials in the language that is most comfortable for them. And let's be innovative in how our students with disabilities, neurodiversity are educated to meet individual needs. We need to be innovative in so many different ways in order for our students to succeed.
Thank you. And Anthony Starks.
I would like to continue to do what I've been doing for 22 years, working with young men and women, helping them achieve their goals and also bridging the gap between teachers and parents. We we definitely have to bridge that gap. I think if we can bridge that gap, that'll help all of the test scores and everything because there's a communication gap upon receiving information from school boards and teachers and so forth and back and forth with parents, you know, getting the information back to teachers. So we definitely, that's we that's something we really need to pay attention to because doing, I've been coaching for 22 years, working with teachers, parents, it's always a gap. I hear from a teacher that the parent didn't respond back or the the parent saying that they didn't hear anything from the teacher. I think if we can help narrow that gap, I think that will help the scores and stuff tremendously. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria Graham.
So how I would intend to serve the district is, I mean, in my current profession as a corporate trainer, I mean, what I do is education. I would want to do a full assessment and look on a granular level at all aspects of Osseo School District. I want to look at funding, I want to look at the disparities. There's just so many things that should be looked at and reexamined on a broad approach. And that's how I see us moving forward. I see me using, again, my experience as a a parent with an 18-year-old, with two kids in first and second grade and just have that hands-on experience on the ground. But a huge part of it is just doing a full assessment, looking at everything, item by item, and making the best decisions for every single family.
Thank you. Heather Douglas.
Thank you. I intend to continue the great work of this district by keeping our decision-making process student-centered and equity-focused. I will continue to support efforts to use data-driven information to guide the work while making space for all voices to be heard. This includes ramping up our engagement efforts and developing easily digestible resources for stakeholders to have a clear understanding of the work happening at all times. Fiscal responsibility will remain a priority as we continue to spend down our fund balance as planned and advocate at the legislative level for the state to fully fund our schools in accordance with state mandates. I will continue to use my knowledge and expertise to advance the mission of this district and support all students. Thank you.
Thank you. And Scott Bellman.
This is an excellent school district with the potential and financial resources for meaningful improvement that will help close that achievement gap. Organizations work better when they're well-managed by people with a broad range of skills. The school board should have people who can manage people and process, who understand how to create, implement, and manage large budgets to get the most effective results from intentional stewardship of taxpayer funds. But it isn't just about the money. It's about managing the money well so that we can be most effective at closing that achievement gap and helping students feel a sense of belonging. We should have people on the school board who are parents, who've lived here for some time, who want to see success from students as they progress through their school-age years. We need people who care, who show love and compassion, and who can provide some tough love when required. As a school board candidate, I have experience in each of these areas and that's why I believe I'm the right candidate for the school district's board. Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, on behalf of the League of Women Voters and the Twin West Chamber of Commerce, I would like to thank the candidates for agreeing to participate in tonight's forum. And I'd also like to give you an extra special thanks for your flexibility because due to the number of candidates, in order to keep everybody safe, we had to break up into two groups. So an extra thanks for that. Also, I would like to thank our friends at CCX Media for their continued support of the League of Women Voters in our shared mission to provide nonpartisan forums for voters to get to know the people who wish to represent them. We'd also like to thank our viewers who sent us excellent questions. Remember that if we could not get to your questions tonight or if you have any further questions for the candidates, we invite you to contact them directly with your concerns. Information about your candidates may also be found on vote411.org. Please remember to get out and vote on or before November 3rd as your vote truly does count. Thank you and have a great evening. Stay safe. The League of Women Voters is an organization that is nonpartisan and volunteer-based. It is organized at the local, state, and national level to encourage citizens to participate in government. While the LWV members do study and take stands on issues, we do not endorse or support political parties or candidates. The League does encourage its members as individuals as we encourage each of you to get involved in your community and the political party of your choice. However, the views expressed in this forum are those of the individual candidates and not those of the League of Women Voters. By sponsoring tonight's forum, the League provides an opportunity for citizen participation and exposure to candidates but does not provide an endorsement of any candidate or candidates. All viable candidates have been invited to participate this evening. Tonight's forum will be for the Osseo School District 279 for three open seats for four-year terms. In tonight's forum, the candidates will start with six of the seven questions they received in advance in which they have one minute to respond. Then our candidates will have up to 30 seconds to respond to each of the questions that are coming in via email. Finally, they will be given one minute for the final question that is their final statements. Candidates, the League would like to request that you refrain from making any personal attacks on your fellow candidates. Due to the pandemic, to help keep everyone safe, we have no Due to the pandemic, to help keep everyone safe, we have no in-person audience at this forum or any of the other forums we are conducting. We have been posting email addresses where questions may be sent. During this live broadcast, your questions may be sent to candidateforums@twinwest.com. We have screeners here tonight, making sure the questions are relevant to all candidates in the forum and not in any way a personal attack towards any one person. I'd like to take a moment to point out our timekeepers for this evening. They will show you when you have 15 seconds to finish your statements, then show you when your time has expired. Please finish your sentence at that time as I will be directing the next speaker's turn. The order has been randomly selected and I'll introduce the candidates, starting from number one going this way. We have Miemon Quigley and then Mike Ostapi, David Hallman, Melody Brinkley, and Tamara Grady. And we will start the questions in that order and after that, it will be in random order. So the first question, please tell us about your background and previous school district involvement that support your candidacy for this position.
Wonderful. Good evening and thank you all for having us tonight. My name is Miemon Quigley and I am an Osseo alum. I attended Osseo K-12 and I have three students in the district. I graduated from Osseo and went on to St. Catherine's University where I received my Bachelor's of Science in Public Health. For the past decade, I've worked in higher education, including the University of Minnesota in clinical research. I have worked all throughout the Northwest suburbs in different school districts, including many of Osseo schools as a youth development educator and a out-of-school-time facilitator. I've worked as a community liaison with Brooklyn Center Police Department, specifically with our community of color, bridging that gap between the police department and our students. And I, right now, am facilitating and implementing the Community Schools Model at Brooklyn Center Community Schools where I manage our budget and program.
Thank you. Mike Ostapi?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mike Ostapi. I'm currently Chair of the Osseo School Board. During my nearly two years on the school board, I've helped lead the search for new superintendents. Been involved in the formation and launch of a district-wide facilities improvement and expansion plan and have helped lead the discussion and formation of the new updated strategic plan. My education as an electrical engineer equipped me with the skills to solve complex problems. After receiving an MBA in finance, marketing, and strategy, I worked as a business consultant in several Fortune 500 companies across different business functions and industries, which gave me a deeper understanding of the real-life issues large organizations such as the Osseo School District face. Over the past 10 years, I've helped grow several startup companies and create jobs. This unique blend of skills has proven to be critical in my role as Chair of the Osseo School Board, an organization with a $350 million budget, 4,000 staff, 20,000-plus students, and 150,000 residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you. David Hallman?
I'm David Hallman. I've lived in the school district since 2006. My daughter has grown up in the school district, starting at Fernbrook Elementary, moving to Osseo Middle, and then moving to Maple Grove Senior. I was, helped Mr. Chance at Osseo Middle School get the watchdogs program started roughly, well, it's been a few years, but for about five years I was involved in that. I also helped another friend of mine get the same program started at Maple Grove Middle School. I also have a degree in engineering, mechanical engineering, and I've started my own business about eight years ago. So I understand starting a business from the ground up and also managing a business and managing the finances for something like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Melody Brinkley?
Hello. It's an honor to be here today. I began my teaching career in the fall of 2002 in Southern California. Since that time, I've had the privilege of teaching in two Title I public schools, a private school, and at the collegiate level advising and teaching college students. I also got the privilege of being the Dean of Student for four years at a private school in Brooklyn Park. I believe I serve as a bridge of perspective between teachers, administrators, and parents because I've stood in each pair of shoes. I have an experience that can bring unity and inform effective policy to benefit student learning for all students.
Thank you. Tamara Grady?
Good evening. My name is Tamara Grady. Good evening. My name is Tamara Grady. I am advocating for a safe, equitable, and quality education for all students. Yes. We have our both digital and analog tech problems now? Good? All right, thank you. Good evening. My name is Tamara Grady. I am advocating for a safe, equitable, and quality education for all students. I grew up in Northfield, Minnesota. I earned a master's degree in anthropology from the University of Oregon. I have worked as an archaeologist, a city government clerk, and a homeschool teacher, and I served as president of the Chicago Gifted Community Center. My family and I moved to Maple Grove five years ago to enroll our kids in the Osseo School District. And we are proud that our children are a part of the LGBTQ community. I have served as Chair of the Diversity and Inclusion Task Force at Maple Grove Middle School and I was on the District Planning Advisory Council. I am currently working on a master's degree in advocacy and political leadership at Metro State. I am running for Osseo School Board because I believe in the promise of education to develop the academic, social, and emotional needs of all students.
Thank you. And we'll go to the second question and we'll start with you, Tamara Grady. Do you feel the district is doing a good job of educating its students and preparing them for post-secondary education or for entry into the workforce? Why or why not?
The coronavirus pandemic has accelerated many changes in our lives, including the use and the integration of technology and the demand for a global workforce that is trained for both health and computer sciences. It is important to note that there are areas where the district is doing well. Our schools have good career resource centers and we have outstanding programs like the Osseo Senior High's Nursing Program, the PSEO Program, and the Genesis Program. Preparing our students for this world will require the district to expand vocational programs with more teachers and more equipment, to broaden science and math curriculum from K-12, and to accelerate partnerships to connect students with local colleges and employers. The district will need to continue strategically growing programs in order to prepare all students for a rapidly changing workforce.
Thank you. And next, we'll go to Miemon Quigley?
All right. So I believe we are on the right track and there are certain buildings and teachers who do a great job implementing and incorporating preparedness in their advisory curriculum. I do appreciate Godfrey took the curriculum and set off a diverse perspective. I have to highlight our Career Resource Center, our Health Science Program, along with our STEM Connections and Project Lead the Way, especially Brooklink as well, the summer internships that they provide for our students, specifically our students residing in Brooklyn Park and Brooklyn Center, to work with, you know, our Medtronic and police departments, banks, and get different certificates and trainings. However, I am not sure all students are getting the same college and career readiness and opportunities because the district does not have a standard curriculum. I believe the opportunity gap also shows that our district has some room to grow.
Thank you. And Melody Brinkley?
I am actually so proud of our district, not only offering excellent PSEO and AP courses for college preparedness, but also our growing technical training in our high schools. I believe momentum is with us to expand upon this and offer, expand upon what we offer in both tracks. But one area I would like to see us immediately explore and develop a bit more aggressively is our entrepreneurial-ship-focused programs, including internships. I know we've begun relationships, but I think entrepreneurial specifically because we are actually preparing students for jobs that don't even exist yet. So I think that has to be a new focus.
Thank you. Mike Ostapi?
We are doing well, but we can do better. We offer HP, AP, and IB courses across our schools. A percentage of our students do seek higher education from local community colleges as well as primary universities across the country. Our PSEO program also allows our students to attend college while obtaining high school and college credits at no cost to them. We need to ensure that more of our students do graduate with the abilities to attend college if they choose to do so. However, for many, going to college is either not desired or not feasible. There are great paying jobs that are going unfilled every day and our high schools do have unique programs designed to fill these needs. I'm always proud to highlight our automotive and medical programs at Osseo Senior High, our ProStar Culinary Arts Education at Park Center, and our technical courses in Project Lead the Way at all of our schools. In the past, our principals were held accountable for the percentage of students that were accepted into college. This left several people on the sideline. What we need are more courses in the skilled trades, allowing our students to start down a path of careers as a plumber, electrician, carpenter, or other well-paid skilled trade people. Thank you.
David Hallman?
I personally think our district does a great job getting kids ready. There are plenty of opportunities, of course, to make it better, which I would like to see. Specifically, my areas where I would like to see more work done is to tailor these kinds of programs specific to the schools that they're in because I think that our district is so diverse and so different from school to school that there may be opportunities to have particular programs in some schools and not in others, just to tailor that to the students and to what they're looking for specifically. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Melody Brinkley. Do you believe District 279 is performing well in closing the opportunity or achievement gap? And if not, what would you propose to enhance that effort?
Absolutely. According to the Minnesota Department of Education, there was noted regression in the last three years across the board in reading, math, and science in our district. However, some of our schools weren't even meeting national averages while many were. Thus the gap. So while achievement tests are not all-encompassing in assessment of a student learning, nor do they measure capability, they're a valid indicator for where the district needs to channel its focus. There are foundational literacy and math skills missing. Firstly, I would be paying attention to the access to learning as right now, there are families who still do not have access to internet in our district. Secondly, I look forward to making suggestions for reformation in our literacy and math intervention programs as I have specific expertise in this area.
Thank you. David Hallman?
I think my opinion on that is that the district, again, from building to building, is going to be different. There'll be achievement gaps maybe varying depending on which building you're in and which group of students we're talking about. So I think you need to tailor specific solutions to address that in the school with the teachers, with the administrators. I just don't believe that there's a district-wide solution to fix that. I think that you have to tailor it individually so that students have an opportunity, in their area of opportunity, to be able to cover the things that they need to cover to make up those differences. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Ostapi?
No. However, we have invested and prioritized significant resources to close the gaps. We've reduced class sizes in our lowest-income parts of the district. We actively seek to hire and retain more teachers of color. We spend a significant amount of time and money to train our teachers in culturally responsive practices. We also have our own equity staff. We are in the midst of an equity audit by the Midwestern Plains Equity Assistance Center to better inform us of future practices. Our superintendent last year started going to each of the high schools to hear directly from student leaders about what their needs are and what their concerns are. Of course, many of our disparities can be traced to family, social, and economic issues, which we are trying to mitigate through increased family and community engagement efforts. We must focus any and all new efforts on programs that have proven to be successful and not on ones that just sound good or promote an agenda. We have identified many promising practices that teachers use to improve outcomes and will continue to use data to drive our work to improve our outcomes for all of our students in every school, in every community. Thank you.
Thank you. Tamara Grady?
I believe we are failing our students of color. This is not just an Osseo district problem, it's a Minnesota problem. It is a part of our American story. The gap is not a failure of individual achievement. Gaps and opportunities are a reflection of social, political, and economic systems because we know that children cannot learn while experiencing hunger or a lack of social and emotional support. I envision a district that is fully funded by the state legislature, that provides technology equitably, and provides wraparound support services. As your school board member, I will review the district budget as a moral document addressing racial equity in how the district allocates fundings. I will support professional development for staff and teachers to address racism in our school cultures. And I will fight for an inclusive environment that welcomes teachers of color so that our students of color can see themselves represented in education.
Thank you. Miemon Quigley?
I believe that our district is well-intended. I am very data-driven and believe data is extremely important for changing trends of performance management. And to get to a solution, we need to marry the data. And our data shows that we're failing our Black and Brown students. We need to bring students and families in and cannot use data alone, but rather use quantitative data and qualitative data and solutions. I believe it's our economic responsibility to our students, families, and community. How do we know students who go to college are graduating if they make it there? How do we know our scholars are ready to enter the trade school or complete trade school? How many students enter their careers and stay in these positions in advance? We need this data to see if we are truly investing in our young people and we need to make sure that we not only hire staff of color but retain staff of color. We need to make sure that we're including our teachers, staff, and admin in professional development that we're implementing in the schools because if it's not what our staff want or feel that they need for their classroom, it's not going to be beneficial to our students.
Thank you. Our next question, we'll start with Melody Brinkley. The COVID-19 pandemic has significantly altered the way that the district delivers its educational services. What do you think the district has performed well during the pandemic? What can the district do better? How would you help get the district prepared for other potential future emergencies?
Sure. I want to say firstly, I'm so appreciative for the communication I have received. I feel fully informed upon what's going on and when by our district. I think they've done a fantastic job. And I'd like to say this as well, our teachers are nothing short of magicians. The amount of time in which they pivoted to be able to address our children's needs and work in pretty impossible circumstances has been nothing but amazing, in my opinion. However, there have been bumps in the road. I think our technology obviously has been a work in progress, particularly getting one platform, a cohesive one, where you don't have three different passwords to just get your kid ready for school. I shouldn't have multiple PINs and all these things. I think one consistent platform is what I would help research and choose to implement immediately so people can have what they need to do, what we have to do for the future.
Thank you. Tamara Grady?
Distance learning is particularly difficult for English learners, our younger students, and those needing special education services. This impacts our community's mental health. We need community partnerships to expand our mental health infrastructure and our schools need more guidance counselors, social workers, and therapists. I believe that the district has done a good job of being responsive to the public health data. The district has done a remarkable job creating the Distance Learning Academy, given the short time they've had to put it together. But we need to make sure that we have enough teachers and ESPs to meet the needs of students. And I also think we need to leave room to grow for, in all of our abilities, to engage students online because it is difficult work. In order to ensure student and district success during this pandemic or foreseeable future emergencies, we need parent involvement like no time ever before because I believe that people closest to the problems are also closest to the solutions and that every family and child is experiencing the pandemic differently.
Thank you. Miemon Quigley?
Yeah, I always believe in leading with grace, especially during a pandemic. So I want to give a shout-out to our staff, our district, our teachers, who are basically working two jobs right now for all that they've done. I would have liked to see a stronger partnership with our city and the county in regards to connectivity and even device deployment. And as mentioned, mental health. One in five young people are impacted by mental- One in five young people are impacted by mental health issues, with access being a major issue for young people. Lack of access to mental health really does contribute to school dropout, unemployment, involvement in juvenile and criminal justice service, and then drug and alcohol abuse and suicide. I would encourage our district to adapt the community-school model where these partnerships are already in place. You have mental health services onsite, dental, vision, access to housing stability, insurance. These wraparound services really make it easy when you are facing the time of a pandemic to really reach the community's needs and support the whole child and whole family.
Thank you. David Hallman?
I think the school district has done a great job up to this point. It's been a very challenging time, particularly at the end of last year, trying to figure out how we were going to do this all at once. They didn't have quite as much time as they needed, I believe, to prepare for this year. Even that being said, they've been doing an absolutely outstanding job. I particularly like, at the high school level, I have a daughter in high school, that they're actually learning what it's going to be like. This is more of a college schedule than a high school schedule, so it would be kind of a natural progression for them to move on from being in high school to being in college, just the two-day-a-week and things like that. So overall, I would say they're doing a good job. Ultimately, my goal would be to get all our kids back in school as quickly and safely as we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Ostafi?
Right now, I would give the administration a B, B-, everyone has worked very hard, and compared to other districts, we are doing quite well. In comparison to being back full-time, we obviously have a ways to go. On the positive side, we created a K-12 online school with over 5,000 students in a matter of weeks. We could have been more proactive, but the enrollment exceeded our expectations by 100%. And due to last-minute enrollment and teacher change requests, we did not achieve the full stability in our program until recently. We have communicated to all of our families in many languages, but there has been some breakdown between in-person and DLA communications. I think we could be more clear when a change is dictated by the governor and when the board is making an optional decision. Many parents have communicated their concerns of a lack of educational rigor during online days when in hybrid mode. Each school, teacher, and course is different, but the administration is working towards setting increased expectations for online learning days. We have the opportunity to create this for the future. Many kids will find that they're doing well in this, and hopefully, those learnings will be taken to an online school in the future.
Thank you. Next question, we will start with you again, Mike Ostafi. Do you feel there are systemic racial disparities and our implicit biases in the way the district delivers education to its students today? Why or why not? Please give examples.
This district has seen an extraordinary change in its demographics over the past 20 years, and that has led to implement many changes. We hired consultants, created our own equity training, and recently expanded it. We elevated the leadership of our equity work. As a district, we have taken many steps to reflect all of our students and their cultures in our learning environment. We are hiring more teachers of color and training them in hope that they stay. We are purchasing materials to reflect our different cultures within our classrooms. We have created cultural identity courses. Is it enough? No. Have we had missteps along the way? Of course we have. I'm not aware of any malicious intent. I am seeing our staff going through training and trying their best to incorporate new ways of teaching and communicating with a greater cultural awareness. We want to get our scholars, preschool through grade 12, to realize that they have agency. They can succeed, and that their success depends upon rejecting the notion that someone is keeping them down. We want all of our students to feel that they have adults in their corner and that they can succeed at whatever they do.
Thank you. David Hallman?
I'd like to say that that's not really a question I can answer, and let me tell you why. The reason for that is, is because in order for me to understand if those disparities are there and where they are specifically, I need parents, I need teachers, and I need students, most importantly, to come forward and talk to us about those things. It's going to be different in every building. It's going to be different depending on who we talk to. Those are not things that can be changed or can be fixed by one person or by all the people on the school board together. The only way that those things can be fixed, they have to be identified by you, parents, teachers, and students, and they have to be brought to us with possible solutions so that we can work on them together. This is not a simple problem. It's not something that just cropped up yesterday. This is something we've been dealing with forever. It's going to continue to be something we deal with, but in order to address those things properly, we need to do it as a group. Thank you.
Thank you. Tamara Grady?
When I was chair of the Diversity and Inclusion Task Force, I heard deeply disturbing stories of bullying and harassment that many of our students face in the hallways and classrooms. While advocating for my LGBTQ children, I met other parents who were facing the same barriers to systemic change. Our attempts at equity and student safety were met with denial, requests for more surveys, and for more data, and eventually dropped off the agenda. I envision a school district that holds itself accountable for the hostile school climate. Systemic racism within our schools violates Osseo District's Policy 101, which features a call to action for culturally responsive curriculum and professional development. We need to establish school safety for all students. It only takes one person and a child's school day to make them feel unsafe. The hostile school climate creates social and emotional trauma, which makes it more difficult for students of color to flourish.
Thank you. Mia Moon Quigley?
Yeah, so this is a question that I try not to be too raw and raw with, but as a Black woman who navigated this school system, working within our school district and seeing our young people still endure the things that I did as an adolescent, is why I'm running. I am a Black woman married to a white man, and he does get to walk around in his whiteness every day. And I think it's really important that we talk about systemic barriers in our education system and what is here. We can change it. I have chosen to raise my kids in this district because I believe it is an amazing district. But sometimes, systems and policies and processes need to change. We can't keep holding our Black and Brown students behind, and we can't keep having teachers who don't feel comfortable working in our buildings. These are teachers that I've talked to that look like me, who don't stay. We have to have culturally relevant curriculum. We have to have our classroom pedagogy understood by our teachers, by our staff, by our school board. It's... Thank you.
Thank you. Melody Brinkley?
Achievement scores have concluded disparity in district schools with higher racial diversity. This is an unarguable fact. Another word for systematic is methodical. Methodology is something all good teachers and administrators must examine to be effective in educating their students. As a teacher in my early years, I would pour over lesson plans. I would believe I was executing them perfectly, only to find that there was a disconnect with my students. And upon realizing this, it was my job as a teacher to make adjustments to meet their needs. And as a district, that is our very job today. It will require partnership with communities, as formerly stated, primarily parent and guardian input to identify specific cracks and missing links, so that we can effectively address disparities and excellently educate our scholars in every school.
Thank you. Next question, and we'll start with Tamara Grady. Currently, school board members are elected at-large, or the candidates who receive the most votes are elected to the school board. Do you support a change to create voting wards within the district based on geographical boundaries, where one person from each ward is elected to the school board? Why or why not?
I support a ward system for the Osseo School District. A ward system ensures that each area of our district has more equal and accessible representation to meet the unique needs of each school community. A ward system would also reduce the barriers to participation in school board elections. There are over 110,000 voters in our district, which makes outreach very difficult at the municipal level. A ward system would help the district earn the trust of our Black, Indigenous, immigrant, Asian, Latinx, and students and families of color, and the 26% of Osseo families that are multilingual. This begins with intentional relationship-building with communities that have been repeatedly and historically disenfranchised from participation. This will also require a clear and concise communication strategy available in Spanish, Hmong, Somali, and Vietnamese.
Thank you. Melody Brinkley?
Because my focus is Tina Fire District, I can't support wards at this time. The way it is now, I had to leave my comfort zone and direct community to research and make relationships with those outside of my direct circle, to make sure I was actually seeing our whole district. Wards lend themselves to staying in your corner of the ring, if you will. Division lends itself to discord. I don't want boundaries right now, I want bridges. It's important that voters from every corner of our district believe in their candidates and see themselves as represented by every candidate. So I do not support wards.
Thank you. David Hallman?
I see good and bad with both. The ward system, I think you get specific representation for specific areas of the district, and I think that's important. With the system we have now, you have to pretty much understand the whole district, right? And so there are good and bad sides to both of that. I initially thought that the ward system would be better after further research and looking into it more. I think that the way it is now is better, because again, you have to be plugged into the entire district to be good at your job. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Ostafi?
At-large, voting by wards would have the unintended consequence of pitting schools and residents against one another to compete for district resources. Today, all six board members are motivated to work together to benefit all of the schools, all of the students, and all of the residents in every part of the district. As you know, the taxes collected throughout the district are not even, but we try to distribute them to where they are most needed. Our long-term facility maintenance program is one such example. Building the new turf fields at Osseo and Park Center High Schools is another. This also ensures that we can develop unique programs at each school that attract students from across the district. Focusing on just a few schools or a small geography or a certain group of voters would lead to division, to people demanding that their taxes benefit their children or that their children deserve more than others, which is a fight that none of us want to see. We are one district and need to be represented that way. I believe that moving towards wards would be the start of a district breaking into two, and none of us want to see that happen.
Thank you. Mia Moon Quigley?
Yeah, I think that ward systems is a good way to have a voice from each community. Again, my expertise is community engagement, and I feel like for a very long time, 169 has kind of been our railroad track. And if we have a person from each community that's representing and a couple people at large, so let's say we move to seven board members, five wards, two at-large, I feel like that's a good way to bridge the gap between our community and really have these ward systems understand each other, a voice and a parent or a community member from that area. I believe that it's a good way to have a more condensed version of the board that we have now and not be pitted and divided, but again, unify our district. I think it's really important that all of our parents' voices are heard, all of our students' voices are heard, and teachers. We have a lot of teachers and staff that live in the district, and I believe that right now, they feel very underrepresented. So I believe that having a ward system would unify our district and have a better collaboration between the board.
Thank you. And now we're going to move to a couple questions from the audience, so that will give you 30 seconds to respond. And we'll start with you again, Mia Moon Quigley. How do you feel teachers can be better supported during distance and hybrid learning?
Yeah, I think I'm always going to say, go to teachers and have them at the table. It's really important that when we're making decisions for the people who are with our students, I'm a parent in the district every day, that they know my kiddos, and they're in that space with them, and they know what's best. So including them in decision-making and listening to them and taking that information in. I'm not listening to respond, but listening to work alongside our educators.
Thank you. Tamara Grady?
Yeah, I think, you know, the surveys show that 1/3 of our teachers in the state of Minnesota are ready to quit, because the standards and the expectations are way too high. We're all trying to learn how to manage ourselves and our lives in this pandemic. And as I said before, distance learning and digital learning, it takes a different form of engagement, and we need to give our teachers the support to learn how to best meet the needs of their students.
Thank you. Melody Brinkley?
I also encourage teacher partnership, hearing from them and their stories about how they're managing their time, especially across the disciplines. Particularly, I think we need to reexamine the system we've chosen. We've chosen a hybrid system, and now that we've had it for an amount of time, it'd be good to revisit. How can we adjust this to have reasonable expectations for teachers? I would move toward a more consistent system than what we have right now, and I have several ideas for future.
Thank you. David Hallman?
I believe the best way to support the teachers is for the parents to be more involved. I think we need to hear what the parents are seeing on their side of the table, as far as the distance learning and the hybrid learning and how that's going. The more we can hear from them, it's going to be easier for the teachers to understand what they need. And again, it's going to be tailored to the specific classroom, to the specific teachers, as opposed to us trying to solve it at the district level. I think it needs to be solved, even down to the individual classroom level if possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Ostafi?
Our teachers, ESPs, maintenance staff, all of our nutrition staff, all of our administrators are working very hard, very long hours, to make this work for your students. Please give them grace. Please do not vent about district policies. Take them to the principal or to the administration. Please understand that they want your kids to be back full-time just as much as you do. And please pray for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question, we'll start with you again, Mike Ostafi. What do you see as the most important challenge facing our district?
And right now, the biggest challenge is getting our kids back into school safely. That's the number-one priority that we have to have, working on our DLA process, working on our hybrid, working on our distance learning. All of those things we need to do to improve the education. We also need to ensure that we continue to work with the state government, with Hennepin County, to understand what the COVID rates are going to be doing for, so that we can make the best decisions in the long term going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mia Moon Quigley?
Yeah, I think the biggest problem right now in our district is really our students' overall well-being. I think that there's, whether they're in DLA or hybrid, there's just a lot of inconsistency within their schedules, lack of that social-emotional awareness. And so I would like to see our district do a little bit more community engagement with our kiddos. How can we be creative now that it's getting cold out and do some virtual, I know that it's been schools are doing virtual dances, virtual bingo. So I applaud our PTO. I know that they've been really creative, and as a parent, that's what I want to see for my kiddos, just giving them an option to just have some normalcy.
Thank you. Tamara Grady?
I think we really need to fully fund our staff and our schools in order to meet individual student needs. And I think we need a worldview shift. We've moved into a world where our parents are an integral part of our children's student success, and I think it's really important, as a school board member, to invite parents into that space in order to help meet the needs of each individual student.
Thank you. Melody Brinkley?
Yeah, I would say my greatest concern is at the elementary level, when you have developmental brain activity happening and a prime opportunity to develop foundational literacy and math skills, and their lack of consistency is affecting their ability to learn. It's been proven that by nine-years-old, if you have not yet grasped reading concepts, you're going to struggle. And so I think that a consistent schedule specifically for elementary students is priority number one.
Thank you. And David Hallman?
I agree with Mike. The biggest challenge is getting our kids back to school safely, as quickly as we can, getting them back full-time. That is going to solve a lot of these challenges that we are facing right now, as far as distance learning and a variety of other things, whether it be mental health or other challenges that the children are having at this point. So that's what we need to work towards, is getting them back in school and engaged. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we are going to move to our final question, which will be back to a one-minute response. In summary, how do you intend to best serve the school district and move it forward? And we'll start with you, David Hallman.
My goal ultimately is two things. Number one is to get our kids back in school as safely and as quickly as we can. I feel like if we can do that, we're going to take care of a host of other issues. Number two is, I want to give you, the parents, a voice on the board. I want to give you a chance to tell us what you want. Tell me what you want. You bring it to me, I'll bring it to other people. I want to listen, I want to talk to you, I want to meet as many of you as I can. That's my ultimate goal, is to bring your voices to the board, so that if you see that there are issues in this district that you feel like we need to solve, we need to do it together. Talk to me, tell me what those issues are, tell me how Talk to me, tell me what those issues are, tell me how you would address it, and then ultimately, we can solve these things. But I can't do it alone, the school board can't do it alone. We need to do it as a community, as a group. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Ostafi?
The role of the school board is to hire and fire the superintendent, set the mission and vision for the district, and provide the guidance, strategic direction, and funding resources the administration needs to achieve its goals. I will do this to the best of my abilities. I attend dozens of school events every year across the district and meet and speak with and listen to hundreds, if not thousands, of parents, students, and teachers to hear their concerns and ideas and use that to guide my leadership decisions on the board and provide the direction to our superintendent. I will continue to ask hard questions about our budget priorities and ensure that they are supporting the goals of the district. I will continue to push for accountability of our administration and staff in the selection and execution of existing programs and ensure that benchmarks and success measurements are in place for every task that we undertake. I will continue to keep in mind that I am representing all of the residents of this large, diverse, growing, and remarkable school district. Please visit Mike279.com and vote for me, Mike Ostafi. Thank you.
Thank you. Mia Moon, quickly?
Thanks again, everyone, for having us this evening. I feel our district needs to be intentional about continuously improving our ability to work with our students and community around their unique needs, and do this through an ongoing community needs assessment, intentional engagement in decision-making, and planning and ongoing of staff training. I truly feel like our district needs to work a little bit more closely with our county and city level, especially embedding that public health model into our school system, especially right now during the time of a pandemic. Listening to that data, and again, I am a parent of three students, I want our students back in school as soon as possible. I've always tried, like I said, look at grace when dealing with a situation, and I'm fortunate to be able to spend time with my students right now, but I understand the importance of them being back in school and continuing to have that social-emotional connection and also literacy. But also, I want to make sure that we are doing this safely and for the well-being of our students and families. And so I hope that I can have your support, and I hope that you can vote for me.
Thank you. Tamara Grady?
As your school board member, I will lead with my values of a quality education and a safe and supportive environment. Throughout my campaign for school board, I have already been doing the organizing to create the conversations that we need. I have built the platform for us to come together. My campaign's community conversations events have brought experts and community members together to discuss important and complicated issues like equity in technology, fully funding our schools, and city and county partnerships. On top of these forums, I have personally called over 2,300 voters. I have heard from many families who feel powerless in this moment. They are struggling with distance learning and feeling stuck between having to choose between their children's academic success and keeping up with their own jobs. As your school board member, I will continue to listen. If you share my values for education and leadership, vote for me, Tamara Grady for Oseo School Board.
Thank you. Melody Brinkley?
I'm a proven leader and team player who will work to unite our district to meet the needs of all of our students now, as well as plan interventions for the future. I listen, I see, and I act. I have both the conviction and the qualifications to actually get this done. Please consider voting for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Once again, on behalf of the League of Women Voters and the Twin West Chamber of Commerce, I would like to thank the candidates for agreeing to participate in tonight's forum. And I want to give you an extra special thanks for being so flexible, because we had so many candidates, and we had to break you up into two groups, and we really appreciate that flexibility. Also, I'd really like to thank our friends at CCX Media for their continued support of the League of Women Voters and our shared mission to provide nonpartisan forums for voters to get to know the people who wish to represent them. Remember that if we could not get to your questions tonight, or if you have any further questions, we invite you to contact the candidates directly with your concerns. Information about your candidates may also be found on Vote411.org. Please remember to get out and vote on or before November 3rd, as your vote truly does count. Thank you, have a great evening, and be safe.